Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Titusville City Council on September 18th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please read the rules for speaking to council tonight.
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you very much, Clerk. City Attorney, please read the rules for this evening's meeting.
The city council meeting may be conducted by utilizing communications media technology as provided in Section 120.545B2 Florida statutes without having a quorum of council physically present in the council chambers. In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstrative aids shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed-circuit television and live-stream YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agenda@Titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the sender's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
Thank you, sir. In lieu of an invocation, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
First item is approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on July 28th, 2020, and August 25th, 2020, and the special city council meeting on August 12th, 2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations, we have none. Boards and commissions.
Yes, sir. We're on the agenda item 6A, the Titusville Environmental Commission. Currently, there are two applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Linwood Woody Rice, resident, and Ms. Laura Lee Thompson, non-resident, have both expressed their willingness to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission as either a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on April 30th, 2021, or as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on November 30th, 2020. Council has recommended to appoint one regular member and one alternate member to the Titusville Environmental Commission.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, do I have any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. We have one card, which is Dan Johnston.
Mr. Johnston? Name and address for the record, please.
I don't know. The same Johnson, personally, he should be employed at Titusville. And I even promoted Woody Rice because I knew him was a great guy and everything. He's just a wonderful person, a former council member and so forth. Well, unfortunately, I asked him some questions about the flood zone, and he did not tell me the truth. He did not tell FEMA the truth, and he withheld information from FEMA that the flood zone where Dan Diesel's mother-in-law lives was, where the city had all kinds of information beginning in 1985, that the flood zone was an error. In fact, as he was to review as the certified foot plane manager, the information to be sent to FEMA, and he never sent it to FEMA. And he lied to me. He lied to my wife. He lied to City Manager Mark Ryan. And so for this dishonesty, I don't think he should be eligible for this particular place. It's a big deal. And so what happened in March of 2014, the City of Titusville officially adopted a new flood zone map, erroneous flood zone map, within two weeks. Mark Ryan said, "Mr. Rice, you got to put that in there at FEMA." And all of that is an engineer for this dams at the senior center had said, "This information needs to go to FEMA." Ignored it completely. So did Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Stauffer's right in our [inaudible]. So what I'm saying is this dishonesty hurt the city. And about, within two weeks after it was approved, city sent information to FEMA. FEMA said it needed more information. City paid over $70,000, had Geosintec do a letter of map revision, and it's possible that all that would have been straightened out if Mr. Rice had been honest. And Mr. Rice doesn't like me talking about this. In fact, he's threatened to sue me. He's not going to sue me. He's very guilty of this. And so he is not a good candidate for serving on any city commission. And if you want to look at this, I've sealed it in writing, this problem, and sealed as a professional engineer. Mr. Rice has been dishonest. Fact is, one time, he even gave information. He came with the city council and said, "My God, you know what? The city can review dams without knowing what they flood." And he explained it. No one could understand a word he said. It was all gibberish. And you can go back to the tape of it. It's all gibberies. Nobody could understand, not even Mr. Rice. City Mayor said he's going to try to find out, explain to, get from Mr. Rice what he said. Never happened. No explanation. So what I'm saying, we got a problem. Thank you.
Your time is up, sir.
You've got a good candidate here, Ms. Thompson.
Your time is up, sir. I want to make a statement here. I know Mr. Rice for many years, probably about 30 years now. I find his character beyond reproach. I have sat on many boards with him. I have worked within the city with him. I have never seen anything like was just described to you. I'll leave it at that. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this issue? I see no one. We do have, well, a circumstance. You want to explain it, or should I, on this item?
Sure. With the Titusville Environmental Commission, you are allowed to have three non-residents. You currently have two. However, you're supposed to, by your own code of ordinances, the resident has, I guess, priority, Richard, or what is the word for that?
Under Section 31122 of your code, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission appointments, in making appointments, council will give preference to residents whose applications demonstrate educational background or professional experience in environmental or sustainability issues. To be eligible for appointment, each member must be a registered voter and resident of the City of Titusville for a period of one year immediately prior to appointment. To the extent the city council is unable to appoint members that meet the qualifications, the city council may appoint up to three non-residents of the city who reside within the boundaries of North Brevard District 1, who are registered voters and whose application demonstrates an educational background or professional experience in environmental or sustainability issues.
Okay. I do want to make another statement now because I have also known Ms. Laura Lee Thompson for at least an equal amount to the time I mentioned with Mr. Rice. And again, her, she is above reproach. We've served on many, many councils together, not these type of councils, but different groups. What we have this evening is, just to restate what you said, our first priority has to be for a resident. And the second, I suggest that we have Woody Rice as the member, because he's a resident, and Ms. Laura Lee Thompson as an alternate. That's my suggestion. Anybody else has anything? Now's the time to say it. Oh, yes, you're up. I'm sorry. Member Nelson?
Mayor, I did, when I realized we had vacancies on the Environmental Commission, I did reach out to both Woody Rice and Laura Lee, who's back there looking very quiet. I think she thinks she's hiding.
Way to have to see that.
Mr. Rice is not here this evening. He is caring for his mother, and he is being very cautious with the COVID. I also spoke to Bill Young, who is alternate, and Bill currently is working on a county board, and they are looking at converting all the county buildings to solar. So he said he would prefer to be in, remain an alternate. And talking to both Laura Lee and Woody, they really didn't have a preference either way. I am hoping that having them on the Environmental Commission will help us with some of the storm water problems, help staff in dealing with some of the storm water problems and some of the other problems we have in Titusville.
Thank you. Member Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To me, it was pretty obvious. Of course, I know Laura Lee and I know Woody also, but, you know, we had a long discussion at a previous meeting planning his own appointments as far as having local citizens being on the boards, and then if we didn't have any, then there was a question of who else was out there who was not part of the city. So I'm with you, Mr. Mayor, as far as what you're suggesting, and I would certainly suggest that we go with Woody Rice as the permanent member and Laura Lee as an alternate member for the TEC.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
With discussion?
Go right ahead.
And that's just because my light was on. I didn't talk yet. Because I just want to make it real clear. Both are great candidates. I've known Woody actually since high school. Was that 20 years ago? Didn't I say last time? So Woody is an outstanding guy. He stood up here many times for many issues, and I really like the way he likes to talk about the balance between economic, environmental, and I believe he's sincere about that. But I've also been able to see Laura Lee give presentations on the environment, and every now and then, on long presentations, you kind of float away. So they're interesting. And the reason they're interesting, Laura Lee, is because you're so passionate about it. And you're also pretty darn informed. And so I, the most recent one, I got to see it twice, was the Chain of Lakes issue you've got going on. And, you know, you are as qualified in the environmental area as anybody I've seen. But again, we've had that discussion concerning living within the city and then going outside if we don't have one. So I'm in agreement with what you're saying.
Anyone else?
Zero.
Sarah? Member Stokel?
Yes, I disagree with what's already been said. Both great candidates.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would ask, I don't know if Laura Lee wants to say anything or not, but usually we afford them the opportunity to talk.
Ms. Thompson? Well, she was, but she didn't want to. But I'll give you another opportunity now if you'd like to, ma'am.
Thank you. I've appeared before this board many times.
We still have to get your name and address.
Laura Lee.
I know. Everybody knows you're Laura Lee.
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Mims. And I've appeared before this board many times and other boards too, you know, to hurl criticisms and throw rocks. And so I appreciate this opportunity to actually be a part of the policymaking mechanism because that's where it has to start. We have to start looking at our policies and what we need to do to help them again. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I appreciate this opportunity to not have to wait until petitions and requests because I got pictures this afternoon from Bill Klein. They're spraying herbicides on the last big northern lake at the Chain of Lakes. All the plants are dead. So I don't know what the city can do about this problem and how to make it stop, but I guess I got to take my show and tell down to the county commission now. Thank you.
Thank you. Much pleasure.
We already made the motion.
Oh.
Time for a vote.
I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
We're on item 6B, which is the North Brevard Hospital District Board, and the chairman, Mr. Herman Cole, will be here to present their semi-annual report, and no action is required.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I am Herman Cole, Chairman of Parish Medical Center Board of Directors, and it's truly my honor to again be able to present the Parish Medical Center's semi-annual report. A written report has been provided to you that summarizes the activities and outcomes achieved by PMC since our last report. Before I begin, before I begin, I would like to take a moment to congratulate council member Robert Jordan on his recent well-earned recognition as a champion for education. The Board of Directors of the Vieira Charter School recognized Mr. Jordan's outstanding leadership, contributions, and service by dedicating its education building in his honor. They didn't even wait until you died. On behalf of the PMC Board of Directors, on which Mr. Jordan is our vice chairman, we extend our sincere congratulations, and I'm proud to call you a colleague and a friend. Well done. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity as well to recognize and acknowledge the courage and tireless effort and dedication to duty of our city's first responders and essential workers. We value the partnership and collaboration between the city and parish through this pandemic. Your Parish Medical Center and its care partners continue to devote every available resource that we have to the tune of millions of dollars towards the fight against this public health crisis. After the Fourth of July weekend, the medical center anticipated and prepared for the resulting surge. Our brave care teams saved the lives of many who fought the virus and won in our ICU using all of the treatment options available, including convalescent blood plasma treatments made available to us due to our relationship with the Mayo Clinic. Sadly, our care teams also hold vigils to gather with those who lost lives with the virus, offering comfort and a healing presence. Parish leadership expects a new surge. Labor Day, for which they are prepared and have been prepared, is underway for the upcoming flu season, and we must stay vigilant with the collective preventive efforts. Please wear face coverings when social distancing is not possible, staying home when sick, and washing hands often. Moving from COVID to other parish center updates, we are pleased to announce a new interventional radiology services that are now available. PMC has partnered with Radiological Partners of Florida, RAF. RAF has promoted a culture of quality and innovation for over 50 years. It consists of more than 120 subspecialized radiologists and is the largest private practice in the state of Florida. RAF provides professional services to over 50 hospitals and ambulatory locations throughout the state. They are the primary facility for radiology residency and fellowships for the University of Florida, and they have 32 residents and eight fellows per year. Additionally, they are associated with the University of South Florida and FSU through multiple teaching agreements and affiliations. We are also pleased to report that our children's center reopened on August 31st. The children's center's team worked hard to prepare for a safe opening, and we are pleased to be of service once again to our North Brevard families. Our parish health and fitness centers open for rehabilitation services only at this time. Patients are seen by appointments only. Given the high risk of our population that we serve, the gym portion of our fitness center will remain closed until such time as COVID-19 pandemic, well, say that word twice, no longer presents a public health threat. Lastly, I would like to direct your attention to the screen. PMC services continue to expand with 28 additions to our medical staff and parish medical group since March of 2020. In the interest of time, I won't read the names aloud, but you can see, we have added providers to many specialty areas from internal and family medicine to diagnostic radiology, surgeons, among others. As always, your Parish Medical Center is unwavering in its commitment to serving the health and wellness needs of our community. This concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
As always, great job with the presentation, and as always, it's hard for me to let this time go by without saying some things. I normally talk about the extra added thing you do for our city, and that's the community aspect. You know, the lighting of the Christmas tree, the breakfast with Santa, and on and on it goes. And I don't know where we'll go with that this year. I get that. But man, you guys have answered the bell. You met the challenge. You led our community, our city, all of North Brevard and probably beyond with testing, guidance, information, support. Parish was there, and I can't say enough about that. So I will simply say thank you for being there in this tough time because, you know, leaders and exceptional organizations come to light more when there's a problem, when the seas are rough than when the seas are smooth. And this particular year, you guys had the opportunity to show myself, our community, and those who are aware of that you are, you do step up to the plate, and you do swing the bat, and you do hit the ball, and you guys have answered the bell, and I thank you for that. And I hope we can have a lighting of a Christmas tree sometime, too.
I hope so, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Member Jordan?
Yes, sir.
Colonel Cole.
Don't ask me the question.
I want to answer your question. Actually, I want to make a statement, and it's really about, of course, you're a part of the leadership of the board, but I think we should pay special attention to that gentleman there. George has been at the helm for many years now, as long as I've been there, some 20-some years, and he has always been that solid rock for North Brevard, always have been. The meetings that we go to, and we have to discuss a lot of intricate details about things, and if there's anyone who is very knowledgeable about what's going on in the world, who has brought it to this small town, it's George McCarterian. And I must say, I have been very blessed to be part of an organization that has a leader like George who just cares about this community. So my hat is off to George and, of course, Natalie. I have to say something about you, because Natalie has, she's a senior vice president now, and she definitely now, and she definitely has earned that position. She and George and the other executive make a great team, and all they care about is keeping us safe, not only with the medical side, but the emotional side. And, you know, when you start thinking about COVID and what was going on and how afraid all of us were in the beginning, Parish was the one that first started these tests for us to make sure that we were safe. Parish was there and in charge and anyone, anything. When anyone needed anything in the community, Parish was there. When it was time to spend some money and a lot of money to make sure that the patients were safe and the employees were safe, Parish was there. So my head is off to Parish Medical Center for everything that they have done for this community. Parish is a diamond in the rough, and we are very blessed to have Parish in Tottisville. So thank you so much, George and Natalie and Colonel, for everything you do for North Brevard. That's it. Thank you.
Well, I don't think I could add anything to what has already been said.
But you can say more. The accolades are great, especially when I'm standing here.
I won't do the accolades, because they've already been given, but I will thank you all for what you do, and I've been associated with all of you, again, for many years. Guess that's because I'm old.
Older than me.
Ah, wait a minute. At any rate, thank you for what you do. We appreciate it. And I didn't like to remark about the diamond in the rough. I don't think you're rough at all.
No, no, we're a real diamond.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Next item, sir.
Item, we're on item 6C, which is the Municipal Code Enforcement Board, and the Municipal Code Enforcement Board's semi-annual report as written is included in your agenda packet. No action is required by council.
Next item, please.
Consent, correction, Boards and Commissions, 6D Planning and Zoning Commission, accept the resignation of alternate member Jan Carey with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2022. Mr. Carey's resignation was effective on August 25th, 2020.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we're losing Mr. Carey. I did call him personally after our last meeting and asked him to rethink what he is removing himself, because I think he did a good job, and it was just unfortunate circumstances of that evening that were not accurate, I'll say. So, but I've asked him also to keep a mind open to coming back in some other position or something. So with that, I'll accept the motion. Sorry? Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I was at the meeting, in the last meeting, where there was discussion about Mr. Carey, and I just wanted to share that with you. But my understanding was, I think Mr. Diesel knows Mr. Carey, because he's very high in the IRC in United Methodist Church, and he does a lot of work there, and he's been through seminary and so forth, and he's very highly been sheriff, and he's also been something else, sheriff, and anyhow, he's got the law enforcement experience. So Mr. Richardson said that, he said angrily, he said that Mr. Carey was forced out of the position because he missed meetings. He did it deliberately, and he had no excuse. So I'm just wanting to share with you is that's what Mr. Richardson, I believe Mr. Richardson said, and I thought that was, that's very different than what Mr. Johnson just said. So I think there should be some clarification there, and I think that, I believe that Mr. Johnson was correct, and he said he spoke to Mr. Carey. So I would like, if possible, a correction to that, if there is a correction due for the statement, I want to say is a negative statement against Mr. Carey. So thank you.
We corrected it that evening, so it's already been on. I'd like to have word before we finish.
I would, too.
Okay. Member Nelson, you're next.
I had spoken to several of the alternates who had told me that they were expected to be there. So when I saw the email regarding the three absences, I took it as he needed to be there, and he wasn't there. And I didn't want to be in a situation where we appointed somebody to a board, and then the next minute we're having to discuss whether they forfeited their seat or not. So I feel like I owe Mr. Carey an apology. I hope he understands I wasn't acting maliciously, but there was a question in my mind, you've missed three meetings, and the question to me was why? Because if he had to be there and he wasn't there, that, to me, was a problem. So I hope Mr. Carey will accept my apology, but I think I was wrong, and I think I spoke out of turn.
Well, thank you for setting that straight. That's very nice. Vice Mayor.
I appreciate the things that were said here tonight, and, because I was going to comment on some of those, and I appreciate that. I emailed Mr. Carey afterwards, and the bottom line for me was, I felt like he deserved better. He's a fine man. He gives his life to others. The fact that he, his career is, as noted, sheriff and some other things, you know, he's a public servant. But I would also say that, like I said last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was, he's very active in our church. We don't have a big staff, so when the pastor is out, there's, what do we do? Well, he stepped up, and he basically becomes the leader. You know, he's a layperson like the rest of us, but he steps up there and he preaches, and he does all the things that have to be done, and as our staff does a great job, because I don't want anybody watching the church saying, well, I do, you know, so I'm not trying to do that. But I am saying, he does a great job. He's a fine man, and it was a little unfortunate how it went down a couple of weeks ago. Jan Carey, I think you're total quality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Member Jordan.
Yes, I actually spoke to him after we got the letter of his resignation, and he was a gentleman, and he actually is interested in doing other things for the city. He mentioned one of the things that I'm involved in. So even though he was disappointed with what happened, he has a heart to serve, and because of that, he is open to other things in the community. So I'm certainly looking forward to him being a participant in those things. So we'll accept it. I'd like to make the motion to accept his resignation. And do we send a letter or anything?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, and send a letter to him, thanking for his service.
You want to put with regrets?
With regrets, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
With regrets on the letter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I will second that.
I see lots of things on there. Member Nelson, are you through? Remember, Ball isn't here. I don't know how that happened.
That would be me. I've got mine on.
Are you on here for some, you want to speak?
No.
It's on there. This is a new system we're working with, so it's a little bit different from what we City manager, you're on there also. Do you have something?
Yes, sir. What happens is when we turn our lights on, it cues you, I'm just ready for the next.
Okay. I'm not sure what that meant, but she, when we turn the lights on, they go on here.
Yes, sir. We'll need a roll call vote.
Okay, yes. I was getting to that. I need, motion and a second roll call vote.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
We're on item 6E, and this is the Student Advisory Council Appointments for Astronaut High School. Confirmed Taylor Batson, Emily Ellis, Savannah Sevor as members of the 2021 Student Advisory Council as nominated by their high school, Astronaut High School.
Let's see. You see nothing up there? Were we doing anything with this one? Hmm? No cards? Okay. We need to vote on that one. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to confirm Ms. Taylor Batson, Emily Ellis, and Savannah Sevor as members of the 2021 Student Advisory Council.
I have a motion and I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public. If anybody would like to speak, please come up to the front. Just have a seat up here, ma'am.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm going to let this envelope talk. This is an empty envelope addressed to me. On July 14th, I gave every member, council member and the city manager and also the city attorney this empty envelope to provide to me the report, this document that was described in February 12th, 2019 by Mayor Johnson and city manager. This envelope is empty, though. I've sent this envelope even before July 14th, and it's still empty. It's because this report that describes how bad I am, that reviewed over 300 pages of my documents that I sent to the city, correspondence, was never reviewed by an engineering company. It's all fraud. So I just handed out today this flyer, it's in the draft form, and let me read about this scam hoax fraud that's by city manager, mayor, and also by all council members. Here's what it says. This city scam hoax fraud is a wild, crazy, malicious, and so forth, and it's untrue. Cities scam hoax fraud is against me and my family and many people who I've represented in our community falsely describe me and the facts. Our city manager and all city councils continue to cover up the truth and to support, promote vicious fraud and malicious slander based upon a fabricated wild story of a $70,000 documentary report. And I'm speaking, this is speaking now, that doesn't exist. There's no report exists. They reviewed my correspondence from, prepared by an engineering company that denies this document, paid by, that denies the document, even the company denies the document, prepared, paid for by the city without a contract. There's no contract. In other words, 2019, there's no contract. There's no contract there. Everybody know about. They reviewed my correspondence to the city from 2012 to 2000 without my knowledge. They said they reviewed my, all my correspondence, probably over 300 pages, did it without my knowledge? You've got to be kidding. So, and demonstrates that just about all that I wrote is wrong, that I'm a professional engineer. So I put in this, which you're going to find, some of you have this, is the ORBN page, where it's word-for-word transcription of what was said on February 12th, 2019, formal request from records, this thing is, okay, records clerk can't find it, none of them can't find the convoy, contract, invoice, report, nothing. And emailed the city data.
Time is up, sir.
Already? Oh, I'm sorry.
Not already.
May I have more time to express this dissonance?
No, sir.
Okay. Figures.
Mr. Johnston says these things, but he received from the city attorney the report he's talking about. He doesn't like the report, so he declares that it's not real. Unfortunately, he has the right to speak, and there's, we just have to go through it, and we have books and books and books over the years, for many years now, that he has written emails in the middle of the night and sent them, and we have them downstairs if anybody cares to look at them, because, but it's just the same thing over and over again. At any rate, we need to, where were we? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, ma'am, you're next. I apologize.
Hello. I'm Deidra Haynes Waller, and I wanted to come before you to ask about your home-based business that's in the ordinance number 201990 you adopted in volume two, where you can have conditional uses for residential property. I'm a homeowner, and I wanted to do residential professional is under conditional use. I did a little homework. I work for the property appraisers office, but in section 2878, it does speak about the residential professional use under conditional uses. So I wanted to come before you and find out about, you know, the zoning for that. It's not that, you know, it's just about me. It's actually changing for business owners who can't afford to have rental property or go into, you know, different places and have an overhead that, especially right now in the pandemic time. I've been a nail tech for over 25 years. Your code says about hairdressers and beautician. I also looked at some of it. It was also talking about not having big trucks, trucks coming in the residential area. I am on a corner lot. I don't have anyone bringing large packages, so if there would be anything that I would be using, I would pick up the products myself. And again, just here to open a door for many people that have talents and that are licensed for it, but don't know how to go about, you know, working from home. And so that's my thing. I want to do it legally. I serve in the community a whole lot, so I'm not a stranger to a lot of people here. I also serve on the, I'm a mentor at the high school, so I know a lot of people here. I graduated from here. I've been here. So like I said, that is what I want to do. I have a permit for where I purchased a shed. I have a lot of my clients that are over the age of 65 that I service them, that are not in a position that they want to be in the salons with barbers and hairdressers. So that's another reason why I stepped forward to, you know, obtain a shed just big enough for myself and a client so that I can service the community. And I thank you for allowing me to come forth.
No, it's fine you came up. I'm glad, but I don't quite understand what your petition is. You went through a lot of different things.
My petition is to be able to get a zoning, residential professional zoning.
City manager, do you want to look at that? I mean, do you want to address that? Because I don't know really what you.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, make an appointment with Ms. Peggy Bisaka right over here.
We've talked many times.
Okay.
She talked with me?
Ms. Haynes Waller and I have spoken several times on the phone. In fact, I believe today we talked.
Oh, what's your name?
Peggy Bisaka.
Peggy. Oh, yes, yes. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
And I am, Ms. Haynes Waller, you're in touch with staff. You have to make an application to do a rezoning. I believe you're doing that. So the process will move from there.
Okay.
So this, you, she is requesting the ability to bring someone to her home, and our home occupation does not allow you to have anyone at your property as part of the home occupation. So what she would like to do is to rezone the lot in her neighborhood to allow this to happen. So she will be, you'll see this later as the conditional use permit moves through the system.
Vice Mayor.
Were you already doing this before the pandemic?
Yes.
Nothing's changed?
No.
Okay, and she has to rezone?
Because she wasn't doing it this location.
Help me? Yes, no?
Yeah, I was in a salon in Port St. John, and like some of my clients, if they needed something, then I would assist them, but it's been over 25 years, so I've always did nails.
Okay, and what you're trying to do now, and we talked.
Right.
And I And I'd say I'm real familiar with it, but I'm, you guys tell, I'm feeling my way through this thing. So the thing is, you're going to move to the shed thing or whatever you're talking about?
Right. I purchased a shed so it wouldn't be inside my home. And that's what I explained to Ms. Peggy when I came in a few weeks ago. I had spoken to someone during pandemic before I even purchased the shed. And I explained all of that to Ms. Peggy, but of course, no one would admit to who gave me wrong information. I've been at the property appraisers office for 15 years, so I'm not trying to do anything illegal. So I asked, and they told me, oh, yeah, you can get a shed and you can have a business. And I'm like, okay, I'm gonna get my permit. And then when I come down, they introduced me to Ms. Peggy, and it's just like, oh, no, well, you can't do that. Who told you that? I'm like, I spoke to a gentleman over the pandemic because you guys were closed. And so were we to the public.
And I've known you a long time, and I know you to be a very hardworking, do your best, and like you said, you're gonna do it by the numbers, and I appreciate that. And I know Ms. Bousaka, to me, has always tried to do what's best and as quick as possible, because that's always a major factor. And the hard part about that is, if it does require, you know, council approval, now we have to wait till the next meeting or however that works. I hope it wouldn't go beyond the next meeting. Ms. Bousaka, would that be?
I haven't even seen, I don't even know that there's an application. It will take several months, because this has to go to planning and zoning. It has to be properly advertised. There has to be a staff report. And she's asking for a commercial zoning in the middle of a subdivision. So I think that this is not something that's going to be particularly easy.
Easy.
It's not commercial. It's residential professional. It's not commercial, and that's the difference in just professional and commercial. Commercial, you bring in the large vehicles. I did my research. You bring in the large vehicles and you have more traffic. I don't have that. If I go and buy supplies, I'm going to the store literally myself and purchasing a supply. So it's not a commercial use. It's residential professional.
Okay, and as we talked, and I think you're seeing it even more and more clear. I don't understand all that. They do that work and they bring it to us. So I would truly suggest that somebody already, I think city manager did, maybe you can sit down with them, because it's back and forth, call them, call them. It might be good to sit across the desk. And I obviously am pulling for you to be as expedient as possible, and it sounds like from Ms. Bousaka, it can be a little tricky because of the angles we're taking. So I appreciate that.
Ms. Bousaka, do you have a further comment? Excuse me.
No, I'm happy to, staff's happy to meet with, with Ms. Haines Waller anytime. She came in one day during her lunch break and could not stay long enough, but she has my phone number, my email. She can call me. We happy to sit down with her. But she is in contact with staff, and I think today she was even talking about what the cost was of the, of the next step in the process. So she is moving along, but this will take a public hearing.
Okay, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could?
I'm sorry. Wait a second, ma'am, please.
Sorry. Peggy, we were talking, she was saying, quoting ordinance 201990 about home-based business. What would that allow?
I don't know. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, because I was, from what it sounded like, she could do.
It talks about commercial, it talks about conditional use.
No.
No?
What it requires, all of our home-based businesses has, there's a prohibition in our code against allowing any person to come to the home. You must go to your client or your customer.
Okay.
So when Ms. Haines Waller got the shed, she, it was, she believed that it had, you couldn't do it in the home. But the code says specifically, you can't do it on the property, and I sent a copy of that code to her. But the, now in the county, you can go to a person's home, but not in the city.
Okay, but she could go to their home, correct?
Correct. And if she wanted to have her license to say that she wants to go to their home, we could issue that very quickly. But she wants to bring people to her home, and that's the problem.
Yeah, this is Rob. Okay. Sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I thought we had a way around that.
Say it again?
I thought maybe that was a way around it.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna relook at that one, because it doesn't specify property. It specifies in the home, in the home. And that's why I'm here, because I have been asking questions and I have been talking to people. And it does not specify on the property. It says in the home. You can't bring people in your home and service them. The shed is not in my home, but it is on my lot.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Jordan?
Oh, she's gone now. That's a, the only thing I was gonna say, I did this once. And I had a woodworking business, and the first thing they say is that nobody can be, you can't bring anybody to the home. What you're asking for is a zoning change, and you gotta understand that once you are going into a community, then part of the zoning requirement is for you to have a hearing, and you gotta have an orange piece of paper that's put on your property for any of your neighbors to come and tell this, this council whether they want you to do that or not. It's not a simple process at all. What I don't want you to walk away with thinking that in a couple of meetings, this is gonna be resolved. It's not. It's gonna take a while for you to do that. I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm telling you, in neighborhoods, people don't like to see a lot of cars coming to a specific place, especially, and I think you said it was nails stuff, right? So you could have two or three cars at your house most of the day or whatever, and you have neighbors who's not gonna want to do that. But we certainly can, can look at it. I just don't want you, and I apologize, you talked to someone and they told you something. I think it was a misunderstanding for sure. But you can certainly pursue it, but it's gonna take a while. I will promise you that. I know with zoning, it takes a long time to get something changed, especially when you're talking about doing a commercial in a residential area. People just don't like that.
Okay, so can I speak on that, what you just said?
Sure.
Okay, so that was another thing that me and Peggy also talked about. I have a neighbor that lives right behind me. We share a lot. She is also a business owner. However, I work from eight to five at the courthouse, and I explained to her, it's not gonna be a lot of traffic. I'm trying to assist people who can't get out, and that was my whole thing. So it's not gonna be a lot of traffic, and I'm on the corner. I have three vehicles in my yard right now. So one other vehicle is not gonna make a difference. I work from eight to five, so I will only be doing nails maybe one or two people in the afternoon, and then on a Saturday. So it's not an all-day thing, and that's what I was explaining. So it's not that kind of traffic. It's not that kind of atmosphere.
The, the challenge you're gonna have is, even though yours may not be a major production, once you change the, the zone to allow something like that, someone else may have major traffic. And that's what staff has to look at and bring it back to us and see what we decide to do with it.
Okay.
Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds, please come up.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Just two brief issues. I had the opportunity to do a trash pickup recently at Spaceview Park here in Titusville. And I had an opportunity to speak with a few homeless residents at the park, and they brought to me two concerns of theirs, and I just wanted to bring them to the council, not here to point fingers or anything like that. I'm just here to bring concern to the council. They spoke to me of blanket trespasses being issued at the park. And they spoke to me about e, the electricity being turned off at the park so that they couldn't charge their phones. And I'm not, I'm not sure at this time, because it was very recently, I haven't had the opportunity to research whether it's the city of Titusville or whether it's the county that maintains the park or whether it's Titusville PD or Vard County Sheriff's Office that is responsible for patrolling the park. But I did want to bring these two particular issues before the council. I do understand that, that some may disagree with homeless being in the park and whatnot. However, if they're not a safety threat, if they aren't a nuisance, if they aren't causing any damage or, or littering the premises, I'm not sure why they would be blanket trespass from the park if they're not causing any issues or why the electricity would be turned off so that they couldn't charge their devices. It would seem that in terms of the electricity, that that would be an issue that would affect more than just the few homeless residents that spend time there, but other citizens that might want to spend time at the park, who might want to charge or plug in a device, would also be inconvenienced and be unable to do so as well. And so I just want to bring those two issues before the, the council, and I'm not sure what action can be taken at this time.
Mr. Edmonds, sir?
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
You came up to me before the meeting or during, before this meeting and said you had spoken to those people, and they mentioned my name.
Yes, sir.
And you were kind enough to say they said some very kind things about me.
Absolutely.
I had a conversation with them on that subject, and I think there might be a misunderstanding there. And I did explain it to them. This was yesterday, I believe. I take my dog out to that park, as I told you, several times a day. And when I pass, and everybody says hello, sometimes we talk a bit. And they mentioned to me that they were trespassed. Trespass is a specific thing, and what I, I don't think they were trespassed, because I asked them if, if the people involved, I'm not sure it was who it was. I guess it was police, but they said something about a, somebody from the park, from the Fish and Wildlife or something at one point, but I'm not sure who it was. But it really doesn't, I guess I'm out of time. No. I, I spoke to them, and I think it was a misunderstanding, because they're all in the park today. And no information was taken. If they're trespassed, the policeman will take all the information from them. And I think after much conversation with them, what they were told, and it was only two of them present, I guess, that the park is only open from dawn to dusk. And you're not supposed to be in there after that, sleeping or anything else. Now, it happens, and if they're not bothering anybody, nobody even knows about it, so. But I, I think what they were told, in fact, the one fellow said, but he could do it because they told him he's a veteran. Well, they can't tell anybody that. I'm a veteran too. But that doesn't give them any rights of, of anybody else. I mean, it's nice that whoever the policeman was, maybe was trying to be accommodating. But if the other fellow was there, he, he couldn't tell him, you know, you can't come in, but he can come in? That doesn't sound like something a policeman would say. So I, I think they were a little confused on what they were saying, and after I went and showed them the sign out front on the other side of the park there where it says dawn to dusk only, and explained to them the situation, they seemed to be satisfied with that. And they're all in there today. There's probably eight or nine people that are there during the day, sitting down, not bothering anybody. They have every right to do that, so. I just thought I'd let you know the rest of the story.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
Yes, sir. Not at all. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you for having me.
Go right ahead. Okay, oh, okay. I thought he was looking at you. I thought you. Ma'am, will you come up, please? Hey.
Hi, my name is Mary Duncan. We live on Zoltan Drive in the Hamlet. And my husband and I moved here two years ago, and we really like Titusville. We could have, he was working in Orlando. We moved from Kentucky. We decided we didn't want to live in Orlando. We had friends in Titusville, and it's been great. My problem is 2501 Dorothy is on the corner, right across the street from us, of course. And the grass is, I measured it today, 30 inches high. And I've called code about it. Whoever is, whoever your code officer is, is not doing their job. I just want to say that, because I've called twice. They don't return my call. My neighbors have called and reported this, and we probably have rodents. It was, he, a Dr. Mather owns the property, and he's a retired physician. He was letting someone stay there. We all reported drug activity over there. Nothing was done about it. Now they moved out, and now we've got weeds that are, you know, that high. So, you know, it's a shame to live in a $200,000 neighborhood, and we just had houses actually sell for $245 and $235 up the street. And then I can't even look out my front window. And I just, who is this code person, and what are they supposed to be doing? Because in Kentucky, if you don't cut your grass, they send you a bill, and if you don't pay it, they charge you about $500, they're gonna file lien on your property. And I asked that when I called code, and they said that they, they like the homeowners to work it out. Well, the guy doesn't live there. So any suggestions or help that we can get with this, because it's.
I will comment that the ordinance is the ordinance, and you're correct. If it's over, I believe, I don't know how many inches, but it's over certain amount of inches. They're supposed to.
It's over, it's 12 or, 12 or less, 12 inches or less is what I read.
Yes, man, I thought that sort of was, but I wasn't sure.
Right.
At any rate, the city manager, I'm sure, will look into that particular thing. Would you give him your name and your contact numbers?
Okay.
We, we got it.
You got it already?
It's on there. It's.
Oh, okay, you got it on the tape.
Okay.
Well, he'll be in touch with you to see, see what's going on.
Okay, because I mean, I, we've had some neighbors cut it for a long time, and, you know, they shouldn't have to do that. And now everybody's like, forget it. We're not doing it anymore.
I get it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Any more petitions, I guess?
I don't believe so. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I didn't see anybody coming up.
Okay, city council and mayor, any items between A and M, 13 items that you would like to pull?
No.
City clerk, do you have any cards on any of the items?
We have seven cards from an individual.
From the same individual?
For.
And mayor, with your permission, I'll read these 13 items
Yes, sir.
for the record. Consent agenda item 8A. Approve the cost-share agreement between the city of Titusville and the St. John's River Management District in the amount of $1,350,000 towards the construction of the Osprey Nutrient Removal Upgrade Project, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Consent agenda item 8B. Approve amendment number two to the state revolving fund loan agreement, and authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city. Consent agenda item 8C. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the state of Florida, Florida State Department Division of Historic Resources grant agreement to complete a historic booklet and walking tour project and to approve the attached budget amendment to recognize the proceeds of this grant. Consent agenda item 8D. Approve the award of, of the work order to AECom Technical Services Incorporated in the amount of $196,616 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to the preliminary design, final design, permitting, and limited construction administrative services for the replacement of the existing Indian River Avenue Force main, and authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8E. Approve additional funds requested in the amount of $58,016 to the contract and purchase order to cover Cigna's medical supplemental and pharmacy premiums for the balance of FY 2020, and approve the attached budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8F. Approve the renewal of the medical reinsurance coverage, subject to the approval of the FY 2021 budget with Symetra, to cover medical reinsurance costs at a renewal rate of $86.81 per single employee per month, and $230.96 per employee of a family member per month. Consent agenda item 8G. Approve the acquisition of a new stormwater VAC truck from Environmental Products of Florida, of Florida, from Apopka, Florida, under a five-year lease agreement with Two Leasing Incorporated from Tampa, Florida, in the amount of $72,332.14 annually. And the maintenance agreement in the amount of $13,800 annually. Additionally, authorize the mayor to execute all necessary agreement documents, subject to resolution agreement and terms and conditions by the city manager and city attorney, create the associated capital outlay project, and approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8H. Approve the use of Brevard County School Board Co-op Purchasing Agreement to award fencing and gate improvements for the Public Works Complex to All Right Fence Services Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, in the amount of $35,681.38 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreements. Consent agenda item 8I. Accept two utility easements from BBL Florida Hotel Group LLC for the Hyatt Place Hotel in South. for the Hyatt Place Hotel on South Washington Avenue. Consent agenda item 8J, accept the easement from DPH Holdings LLC for the area, Aero, Aero electronic expansion on South Park Avenue. Consent agenda item 8K, accept the easement from Life Storage LP for Life Storage Expansion on Garden Street. Consent engine, consent agenda item 8L, accept two utility easements from 810 Cheney LLC for Titusville storage redevelopment located at 810 Cheney Highway. Consent agenda item 8M, accept two utility easements from EA, ESAP Portfolio LLC for the Extended Stay Hotel located on Helen Hauser Boulevard.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, we have cards on this item?
Yes, we have Stan Johnson, which has completed seven cards.
How many?
Seven.
Mr. Johnson, you know how the system works now? If you have more than three, you have 10 minutes. You can talk on those subjects or any other subject you have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, before Mr. Johnson gets up, I just would like, if you would, um, ask him to let us know which items he will be speaking on and go in orders so we can... So, I'm talking. So that we can understand exactly what he's talking about, so we can listen intently on what he's trying to ask us to do.
I can't hear anything you're saying. Come up to the microphone.
Have Wanda tell. I think that's the appropriate way to do it. In other words, I got, I got seven cards. Didn't she announce which, which cards I'm speaking on? That's the way the procedure has always been before. You're going to change this procedure.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, since he has seven cards, he's going to speak on seven items and he has 10 minutes. We need to know which items he's going to be speaking to.
I think the items identified on each card.
So how do we know?
I think the clerk has the items on each card.
Okay.
So she could tell us and we all know which items he's intending to speak on.
Okay.
Wanda, if you could tell us what items he's identified.
Um, item A, B, item D, item E. Looks like F. And H. And, yes, that's it.
The clarification, Mr. Mayor, that I was looking for.
The clarification that I was looking for is she just called out all these cards. He has in the past gone from E to F to G to M. I want to know which one he's talking to when he gets up, up here.
I, I don't think we can do that. I'll leave it up to the city attorney because...
To me, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it, it makes no sense for him to be going all around without us knowing which card he's talking about. So if he's going to get up, if, if she's going to call each one and he says he's finished with that, he's got 10 minutes, then that's one thing. But if he comes up there helter-skelter, then we won't know which one he's talking about.
Can we, what he's asking, can we demand that he tell us when he's talking on each item that he has a card up here for during that 10 minutes?
If you need clarification, you could certainly ask him which item, if it's not clear which item he's speaking to, so you understand that his comments, which item they're relevant to, in case you have questions. So certainly as he's speaking, you could ask him if it's not clear which item he's talking about.
So he can ask at any particular time which item he's, uh, remember Jordan can ask during, that's fine with me if you say it's okay.
The point is, yes, since we've changed, it's, you have 10 minutes and he has multiple cards. Normally start the clock, he begins to speak on the items. I don't know that we've required him to go in a particular order, but if he's speaking on an item and it's not clear to you which item that is, you can certainly ask him which item he's speaking on.
Okay.
So you understand which is common to relative, relevant to, because that might assist you in...
Well, I understand. I just want to make sure that's proper, proper way to handle it.
But he has 10 minutes and, you know, we haven't, in our code, required a specific time for each item. He could use those 10 minutes on how he determines fit on the items he's identified.
But ask him quickly so that we don't have to stop the clock. Can I ask a question following up on that?
Absolutely. On the, on the ordinance, I, I think it was four or five or whatever it is, you get 10 minutes. But should that not require that they speak on each one of the things they're marked for that 10 minutes?
Our code requires that the comments be relevant to the items I, they've identified. So as I stated, if it's not clear from his comment which item he is speaking about, you can certainly ask him which item are you talking about now because it does not appear to be relevant. If you have that question, you can certainly ask that.
Okay. Come up, sir, and start your 10 minutes.
Stan Johnson, 816 Pointset Avenue. Thank you for democracy. Fact is, is years ago, is I'm, I'm going to respond first of all to Mr. Jordan, who have been to church with for years.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, which items he's speaking on?
Okay, please, what, what did you say? Okay, stop the clock, please.
You're not stopping the clock. We, I need to understand which item you are speaking on.
Don't stop the clock. I mean, here he is, he's running, he's using my time and that's illegal. Now, I want my time back.
You're using your time. All you have to do is say one thing.
Using my time. In other words, Mr. Jordan, you're, okay, the clock is still running and you're talking. I'm supposed to have the floor.
You're still talking.
I know I'm still talking, but you are too and so is him. Now, I'm supposed to have some time here. What you have done, I'm responding to what Mr. Jordan says. And I'm using my time and I don't like to use my time for this, but Mr. Jordan, I'm known for...
Stop the clock, stop your voice. You're disrupting the meeting. We'll give you, we'll start it all over again, but you have to answer the question quickly. You're not going to some other rigmarole or I won't stop the clock. And then if you continue, I'll consider you being disruptive of this meeting.
What, what is the question I'm supposed to ask, answer?
What were you talking on? What, what were you talking on?
Which item were you talking about?
Seven on there. We'd like to know what you're talking about.
Are you, are you ready?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to reset for 10 minutes?
Yes, you said it.
Thank you very much. Now, what I'm talking to is I have a bundle right now of seven. In fact, I, actually I started out with 10 and I reduced it because I knew I only had 10 minutes. I didn't have, in other words, right now it'd be seven times three is equal to 21 minutes time. Now, what I did, I need to respond what, what's going on. I've lived here for many years and I've, I've, I've been to church for years with Mr. Jordan and so forth. Now, what's going on is that, uh, um...
Get to the point of what you are here to speak about, sir.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm speaking about this because I'm responding to what, and I'm using my time in response.
You don't have to respond to anything.
I am, I think that I should be allowed to respond with what Mr. Jordan said.
Go ahead.
And I want to respond to that.
It's your time.
Okay, it's my time. Thank you. So, so what I did years ago, I'm, I, I wrote to council and I said, listen, I may, when you're a council member, what you should expect is anyone who comes and speaks on this podium, they should be prepared. And if they're not prepared to speak, they shouldn't speak. And you know what happened? I had every council member refuse that, refuse that suggestion. Now, you guys are refusing, you know, so, so right now, if we're having, uh, I do my research and, and I don't get the time. You don't give me the time. Now, that is that, is that I, I, I told the council, I said, what you need to do is contact the city. So what I do is I contact Mr. Jordan, I contact Mr. Johnson, Mr. Diesel, and all council members. And none of them could return my calls, none of them responded to my emails. Also, Mr., uh, right here, the city manager, he stopped responding to anything that I said two months after he was hired, although I, I came and approached him, I said, listen, we've got problems. I want to talk to you about the city. Sure, I'll talk to you. Sure. Nope, nope, never talks, never talks, just deaf. Same is true with all these council members right here. I send you emails, phone calls and so forth like that. I mean, I've had logs and so forth of, of calling council members every day for, let's say, almost like 10 days in a row. No response. So in other words, what I'm trying to do is, is to be, let's say, how could, how can this, how can this be happening? So what, what y'all did is, is that in other words, you cut my time down. Not only you don't talk to me, you have a closed-door policy. I'm blacklisted. I have members right here that I worked with. I worked, I, I retired here in 2008 that I won't talk to, I won't talk to at all. I won't approach because I'm afraid they'll get fired if they talk to me. So I don't, and I stay with them. But there's other people that I try to talk to. And guess what? They won't talk to me, like Finance Department. Mr. Stauffer won't return my calls. Here he is. I mean, we've got, we, what we know is we got a closed door on all kinds of ways. I've blacklisted him. Although I'm a professional engineer, worked for the city. You guys told all kinds of lies about me. And you know, and you keep, like, for example, I hold this envelope, envelope, envelope. There is no report. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with, like, these, it seems like these seven items, but it does because I'll tell you what. Uh, I, for example, is that I wrote some notes down. For example, I was going to talk about, uh, some of these items. Two of them in particular has to do with Mr. Stauffer. And those are items 8A and 8D. I oppose them. Because Mr. Stauffer has been completely dishonest on some issues, along with Mr. Rice. And I don't think he should be even employed by the city. Because he, he's cost the city, him and Mr. Rice, as far as I can see, has cost the city that cost of that loan mark, which was over $70,000. Because they were dishonest to me, to my wife, to Mark Ryan, and he continues to be dishonest. So I, I think that the city should, should wake up and be truthful, and you're not. All of you are dishonest about this fraud, hoax and scam that you have about me. There's no truth to it. There's no document. There's no contract. There's no nothing. But you keep on doing it and you go to church and you go to school. And what do you learn in school? I don't know what you learn in school. I don't know what you learn in church. But it's all dishonest. So this is where we are right now. And thank you for asking these questions, Mr. Jordan. Because this is, this is the problem. This is the problem. When you are dishonest, where are we going? Where is Wanda, Wanda going? I mean, she has, everybody knows that the report doesn't exist. You all know the report doesn't exist, but you, just a few minutes ago, you just lied about it. Said, oh, Mr. Attorney, the attorney gave it, gave it to me. Well, he knows he didn't, he'd never given it to me because it doesn't exist. All of you know that. He's never given it to me. Yeah, yeah. I mean, you can smile because you have to smile because you're on camera. But the truth is, if you go to court or anybody else that comes and asks you, anybody who comes to the city and asks for the report, they don't get it. It's not there. It doesn't exist. So you continue lying and smiling and grinning and so forth and slapping each other, high five, whatever, and then like that. But the thing is, you, all of you are dishonest. I'm talking about the council members, city manager, and anybody who pretends that, that you have a report, like the same guy, I go to the church with, I'm in a Sunday school class with his mother. He used to be a mother and father there. So Mr. Broome, he's dishonest too. You pretend, you pretend that you gave me the report and you didn't. You never gave me the report. We've even talked on the phone about it. Did you give me the report? No, you won't. He doesn't. He didn't give me the report.
Three minutes.
So, so, uh, you know, uh, so all we have is huge, humongous dishonesty, fraud by you guys. And you're afraid of the truth.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, let him go. Let him go.
You have to have a point of order. If we don't have structure, we don't have anything. And he's not talking about any...
Yeah, structure. We need structure. We need you to tell the truth.
Your clock is not, he's talking to you now.
Thank you, sorry.
I would like to know what item you are on.
What you want?
What item are you on with the consent agenda? You should supposed to be talking about the items on the consent agenda. You talked about E and D.
Thank you.
But now you're off kilter again, so tell me what item you're on.
Because we're off kilter.
He asked you one question. Answer the one question.
What item are you on?
I, I told you before, I was on item, uh, uh, 8A and, uh, what was it?
I hear no relevance.
8A and 8D.
I hear no relevance to those items.
Absolutely. I talked about Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Stauffer is handling these items and he's completely dishonest about the whole thing.
Turn the light on. You got three minutes more, I understand, or about.
Okay, I mean, uh, look at Mr. Mr., uh, Mr. Jordan. I mean, he's, uh, he signed his petition for, uh...
Now, wait a minute. Stop talking about people.
Will you stop the clock? Will you stop the clock? No, okay. All right, then let me talk. Okay. Well, for example, Mr. Jordan, who was a great friend of mine, uh, went to church and everything like that, Promise Keepers and so forth like that. What does he do? He signs a petition, same as like Mr. Jordan, to have the floodways cleaned. And then what does he do? He defies gravity, defies stormwater management plan, devise all these laws, FEMA laws and regulations and so forth. And he says, we are not going to maintain, have these floodways maintain their outside city limits. And this is a threat. This is a threat to the public. It's a threat to our flood relief system. We've got six of those floodways. They're just like a wall of vegetation, no, five of them, five out of six, between Foxlick Road and State Road 50s. So we've got problems and we've got problems with dishonesty. There is no document, no report about, from, on my correspondence, three, over 300 pages of correspondence, 2012, 2013. It does not exist, but you keep lying about it and again, and again, and again. For over 18 months, the lie continues. It's unbelievable. I just, I mean, here I am, I'm from West Virginia and I came here, actually I came here in 51 for a while. And, uh, to see this happening, people who I trusted, people who I believed in, I went to church with and so forth, and they're doing this fraud, scam, hoax. It's unbelievable. I just can't believe what's happening to the city. What's going to happen? Who, what kind of people can you hire? What does it do to the employees when they know beyond any shadow of doubt that all their councilmen, members are being dishonest and so is our city manager Scott LaRice? Completely dishonest on this, completely. In other words, it's, it's to discredit me and it, it's, it does no good, absolutely no good at all for the residents of Titusville. It's a mockery of just, of, of justice and so, I don't know. Uh, y'all have to live with it, but I'm hoping someday that we'll go to court. And those ORB and pages that I have recorded are still there. It shows that all these council members are lying. So, I mean, when you go to court, it's going to be different. And here we got an attorney, we got, let's see, how many attorneys? Two attorneys, yeah. Two attorneys involved here. So I'm look, looking forward to have you. So maybe someday this will open up. But I should have had, let's say, 21 minutes to speak on things that I've researched, but instead I've responded.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you. May I have extra time, please?
Of course not. I apologize to everybody out there. It's unfortunate, but we opened the door and I hope next time, and I'm not admonishing you, but it doesn't get anywhere.
I know.
You don't accomplish anything except allow him a tirade. And we do have to follow the law and the law is very particular about what we do. And oftentimes, uh, he's hoping, he said, he said one thing, one thing true tonight. He wants to go to court. He's figuring on a pay, payday someday and I'm not going to give it to him. So again, I apologize to all of you.
Okay, good.
Any more cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, what's next?
We'll need a motion for consent in a roll call.
I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, consent agenda items 8A through 8M.
Second. I have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? I hear none, uh, all, uh, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
We are now on item 9A.
Go right ahead. Oh, was that a request, require the...
Yeah, Mayor, 9A is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment one, 2020 for 2308 Hopkins Avenue. As a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, there will be ordinance number 10, 2020 and ordinance 11, 2020. I'll read both ordinances at this time. You'll open the public hearing. Has to be both ordinances because they are part... Has to be both ordinances, because they are part of one proposition before council, which is a small-scale amendment. Then we'll take separate votes, so we can be clear on the votes. At this time, I'll read ordinance number ten and ordinance number eleven. Ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by changing land use designation on approximately ten thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet of property located at twenty-three oh eight South Hopkins Avenue by replacing the low-density residential land use with the commercial low-intensity future land use designation, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number eleven, two thousand twenty, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present single-family medium-density R1B zoning district with the neighborhood commercial NC zoning district on approximately ten thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet of property located at twenty-three oh eight South Hopkins Avenue and providing for an effective date.
At, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty, the commission voted unanimously seven-zero, recommended approval of a commercial low-intensity land use designation, and recommended rezoning to office professional OP zoning district versus neighborhood commercial NC zoning district. The applicant is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning to allow the use of existing building for low-intensity commercial uses. The property lies west of South Hopkins Avenue and east of the Florida East Coast Railway. The intent of this request is to amend the future land use from low-density residential to commercial low density, commercial low-intensity designation of the property and rezone the site from a single-family medium-density residential R1B to allow for low-intensity commercial uses within the neighborhood commercial zoning. Ms. Busak is here to answer questions that you may have on this small-scale amendment and your public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Busak? For Ms. Busak, I'm sorry.
I, I have one.
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Busak, the member who voted against this, what was he talking about? The criteria for a roll--
This one is unanimous.
This one was unanimous.
Yeah, this was seven-zero.
I think you want--
Oh, I'm sorry, on the second line. I'll wait. Thank you.
No questions. Anyone else? Now, are there any cards on this item?
We have one card, which is Elena Buckner.
Name and address for the record, ma'am, please.
Good evening. My name is Elena Buckner. I live at one zero zero five North Carpenter Road. If I can just say real quick, God bless you all and your patients, because this is my second meeting, and I'm amazed.
So is my wife.
Back on topic, I just want to say I'm honored to represent Mr. Salazar in his application for the rezone of two-three oh eight South Hopkins. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to borrow a moment of your time in consideration of our request for rezoning. Our initial application was for NC neighborhood commercial. However, after reviewing the city's recommendation, we are very much in favor of the OP office professional rezone. If approved, Mr. Salazar does hope to rent or sell the property as an office building. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have to the best of my ability, and again, I thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any questions? I've seen it.
Thank you.
It's probably a good sign. Okay. Do we have any cards?
No, sir.
Okay. I may have asked that already. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit-- the, these have to be done separately, correctly. We vote on it separately, but it's one, one item. Okay, I'll, I accept the motion on ten dash two thousand twenty, ordinance.
Move to approve small-scale comprehensive plan amendment SSA one dash two thousand twenty for twenty-three oh eight Hopkins Avenue.
A motion, the second.
We'll also need the ordinance as part of your motion, and this particular one is ten, two thousand twenty.
And move to approve ordinance number ten dash two thousand twenty.
At the same time? I thought we voted on it separate.
Yeah, you got another ordinance after this.
The next one will come next.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I have a motion, and did I, do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
You'll need to approve ordinance eleven, two thousand twenty.
So, move to approve ordinance number eleven, two thousand twenty, changing the single-family medium-density zoning to office professional.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
A roll call.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. The reason we're doing a roll call is because somebody is not here, and we wouldn't know whether they voted or not if we just did that. Most of the time, I do it the other way, so I got to slap myself in the back of the head every once in a while and say, remember that. All right, next item, sir.
Onto nine B, which is the right-of-way vacation request, number one dash two thousand twenty for Logan Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request at their August nineteenth meeting and recommended approval six-one. The member voting against the approval did not, did so because the request does not meet the criteria for right-of-way vacation, and the city should utilize the area for vehicle turnaround. The area of the public right-of-way to be vacated is sixty feet wide and a hundred and twenty feet long. The applicant seeks to partition the right-of-way area equally between their prospective properties through this vacation. The final apportionment of the vacated right-of-way will be determined after the approval of the resolution to vacate. Although the right-of-way is unapproved, Florida Power and Light and Spectrum have requested easements providing access to the power poles in the area. And that criteria for the review of a right-of-way vacation and staff's finding are provided in your report. Ms. Busak is available to answer questions that you may have on this right-of-way.
Staff? Any questions, sir?
Can I ask the question now? Can you answer that? Is, is he correct, or? Turn around.
We have spoken with Mr. Cook, and Mr. Cook has advised that Public Works supports this, and that they have been backing down the street for years with this, with their trucks, and they're very comfortable doing that. And my understanding is that Public Works does not intend to create a turnaround in this area.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? I see-- Are there any cards on this?
Yes, sir. We have three cards. We have both the applicant, Tom Dobson, and Roxanne Hahn.
Who'd like to be first?
My name is Tom Dobson. I live on Overlook Terrace in Titusville, and I'm a co-applicant on the vacation for the right-of-way of Logan Drive, or the remainder of Logan Drive, as all previous parts of Logan Drive have been vacated at this time. I think the question on the turnaround has been answered, which, you know, if the city wants to put a turnaround in there, they'll be fine with us. But, yeah, and if you were to vacate this, and we have approval from city staff, and we have approval from planning and zoning, and if we get our approval tonight, we'd be happy to donate any property that the city might want to turn into a cul-de-sac at some point down the road. But we're hoping tonight that we will get an approval on this, pending any questions I can answer, hopefully.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next person, please.
Hello. My name is Roxanne Hahn, and I live at fourteen oh four Elm Terrace in Titusville. My property is next to Logan Drive that we requested be vacated. I've been living in my property for sixteen years, and this road only existed on paper. It was never paved, never maintained, and it's just been overgrown with vegetation and coching onto my property. So, you know, that's why I'm putting the request for the vacate, so at least I'll be maintaining it as I have, but it'll, it won't be just doing work for the city anymore. So, I hope you approve it. I have pictures to show the overgrown vegetation.
Would you like to give them to the clerk, and she'll pass them down? Go ahead, back, ma'am. Anything else you want to say?
And that's all I would like to say.
Any questions from council? I see no lights. No other cards?
Yes.
There is.
Oh, there is?
Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Center Avenue. And maybe you don't want me to talk on this. I mean, Mr. Jordan wants me to itemize and tell which one of the seven items that I wanted to talk on, and everything like this, so I'll let you know is that I'm talking on item B. Right-of-way vacation request, right-of-way on Logan Drive. Does that have anything to do with me? Well, I think it does. I think it does. I vacated the right-of-way on the other side, and that is on Logan, Logan Drive from Elm Terrace to Bell Terrace, because my, I have property over there. My wife and I, we have about fifty acres there. So, I'm going to say, do I want to say I approve of this? Absolutely. Absolutely. And there was a question at one time about what's going on at the end of Bell Terrace, because there's no cul-de-sac there. So, what happened is that the city demanded, demanded someone to, to put a stabilized cul-de-sac there at the end of Bell Terrace. And that's exactly what happened. I don't know how well it is there now, but sometimes there was just, someone put dirt on my property, so people wouldn't just enter my property, or our property, my wife and family. And also on Bell Terrace, my parents lived there for, for, oh, over thirty years. No, it's not, yeah, it's over thirty years. So, I, I'm also, suggested that this issue that was brought up by Mr. Seavers about questioning about the, the T-type turnaround, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, if I were in a truck, I'd rather not back up, because, I mean, although the, you know, it goes beep, 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 beep when they're backing up, which is a nuisance to people, you know, then, at that time of the morning, they hear the beep, 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 every time the trash comes through there. But it's, you should have some kind of turnaround there, even though it's, if it's not for the city, it's for the, for the residents. And, and when we spend twenty thousand dollars or so on, on some lights at the, at the, what do you call place, the, the theater, is that you should really be spending things on, on things like this. This is a safety concern, not just for the city's trucks, but for people going there, because what they have is people, and I do it. When I go to the end of there, I don't back up. I back up into her driveway. That's what I do, and I turn around her driveway. And there's some people that live there that they didn't like me doing that, but I did it anyways, so--
Time's up.
May I have two more minutes? Thank you. They don't have--
Any other cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next item, I think, the city attorney.
We got-- You only--
Oh.
Can't speed it up here. You ready? Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve right-of-way number one dash two thousand twenty to vacate a portion of Logan Drive with conditions approved related, resolution number thirty dash two thousand twenty.
A motion, I have a second.
With, my question is, Mr. Jordan, are we imposing the conditions of--
Make a, a, a discussion?
A second with discussion. And my understanding is, staff is asking for the petitioners to get a, an easement or-- let me, I'm not saying a right. I'm not doing this right.
You're doing good.
We need to have an easement to Florida Power and Light--
Are you addressing this gentleman?
No.
No.
An issue to Florida Power and Light and to Spectrum? Am I correct? Okay. So, those would be the conditions.
But that's, that's a requirement. You have to be able to get there, right?
Yes, sir. That would, that's our recommendation.
That's the recommendation from yours. Yes.
Okay.
That's part of it. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, do you have something relevant to that?
Yes, I do.
Well, please, do it quickly.
My name is Tom Dobson. I've already had extensive conversations with Pam Diaz over at FPL, and we have the paperwork. We even have the survey from Tom Hawley stating where that easement's going to be, so all that paperwork is just hanging there, waiting to drop as soon as everything else is finalized.
Okay.
So, we have that, so that is not an issue whatsoever.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me if we could. Typically, we give people like a hundred and eighty days so that we know that there's some time limit that we have to say this is where, when you need to come into compliance, so I'd like to suggest that we have some time limit to provide the easement.
I would suggest maybe a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, that's fine.
No. Six bucks.
That's my motion, with a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, the motion holds?
Yes.
The motion and a second? I mean, the second holds. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
Next item is ten A, ordinances first reading, ordinance number sixteen, two thousand twenty. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter twenty-one utilities, Article three, sanitary sewer system, specifically amending section twenty-one seventy-six definitions and section twenty-one one-on-one prohibited discharge standards, and by adding a new section twenty-one two twenty entitled Dental Amalgam Waste Requirements to regulate discharges of pharmaceutical waste and dental, dental amalgam waste to the sanitary sewer system, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading of ordinance sixteen, two thousand twenty. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty, at six thirty P.M. And once again, there's no action required by council. This is the first reading of ordinance sixteen, two thousand twenty.
Staff, you have anything you want to add? Go by the rules. Council, any questions to staff? See none? Do we have any cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Center Avenue. You probably don't want me to talk on this, but I've been down some of those sanitary I've been down in some of those sanitary sewers in the, uh, park, one of the places like, I'm on that industrial park, White Drive and so forth, where Mr. Jordan has his business and so forth in that area. And I've been down the sewers, and by golly, some of those sewers, the concrete, whatever they have in there, is eroded, eroded because of chemicals. We've got toxic chemicals coming out of there that people wash down the drain. And when you, you know, I see this thing about, uh, dental amalgam waste and so forth going to the sanitary sewer system, this is a joke compared to what other stuff is going down the drain. I mean, it's even a joke about what's going on with the Indian River. And take about, talk, people talk about nitrogen and phosphorus pollution. We've got all kinds of chemicals going down in our sanitary sewer system. And I'm glad that somebody's recognizing this, but I oppose this ordinance because it doesn't do enough. The city knows that we're putting wild chemicals down in that, in that sanitary sewer. And like I said, as you can go and you can see, the erosion of the chemicals eating up the concrete. I've seen it. So I'm saying that this, I oppose this ordinance because it's not going well. And I don't think that Mr. Stauffer is the right person to handle this thing because he's been completely dishonest to me and doesn't return phone calls. We've got problems in the city, big problems, and this is one of them. When we have poisons going into our sanitary sewer system, and then they used to go out in the Indian River, now they're going into the St. John's. And some of them are going into our, what do you call, our, our, uh, reconstituted water, swimming like that. And then, then some people drink that stuff. But so, we've got problems. We've got pollution problems here in the city, just like up north. Just like in, what is that place? Is Duluth or something like that, where they have lead poisoning? And I think you should recognize it. The, uh, the county is not recognizing anything about any chemicals and so forth going into the, into the river. Although somebody, just, uh, Laura Lee just talked about all these poisons, toxic poisons going into, uh, Chain of Lakes. So I'm hopeful that you all take notice of what's going on and, uh, and straighten up what's going on because this is, uh, this is like, we have the, this earth is like a spaceship.
Time is up. Any other cards on this item? Are you on?
Yes, sir. No old business. We're now moving to new business. And item twelve A, advisability for the state override of local land use zoning laws for affordable housing, which is House Bill one-three-three-nine. House Bill one-three-three-nine, effective July first, twenty twenty, expressly permits local governments to approve the development of affordable housing as defined in Florida statute, chapter four-two-zero-point-zero-zero-zero-four, housing for extremely low-income to moderate-income households on any parcel zone residential, commercial, or industrial use. Based on this legislation, the developer of affordable housing would not be required a land use, uh, and zoning change on property that does not currently permit housing and local government chooses to permit the project. For example, multifamily housing could be located in a commercial zoning district if council desires to encourage affordable housing in that area. Although the city has not received any requests to utilize provisions of House Bill one-three-three-nine, staff desires to bring this legislation before council's attention to seek direction. Staff has identified options that are available in your packet.
Thank you, sir. Hi, Ms. Bisaka. Do you have anything you would like to tell us?
Well, if council chooses that, uh, we have identified three options. The first is that council directs staff to provide policies that we would bring back to you. I, the intent of the legislation, as I understand it, is that affordable housing can take a great deal of time to approve if it has to go through the comprehensive plan and rezoning process. So the intent here is to encourage affordable housing by not requiring it go through that process. So one of the things that staff could do is to develop a policy that could accommodate requests for affordable housing. For instance, um, staff may recommend that affordable housing not be permitted in an industrial area, but that there would be other, um, conditions under which affordable housing may be acceptable in a zoning that is not currently zoned for that, for residential. So we would bring those policies back to you. You could choose to change them, ignore them, amend them, whatever. The second option that we have is that, um, there would have to be a case-by-case basis so we could wait until we actually had someone come in and ask to use the provisions of this statute. And council could look at that on a case-by-case basis. And the third is to say that lots of communities are going to be working on this. And let's wait and see what some of them have to say before we move forward. And we always have an opportunity to, uh, develop policies in the future. This is not a requirement. The, the council can say, we would like the idea that housing go through our normal process. This is simply an option if council wishes to follow it. And if I said anything wrong, I hope our learned attorney will direct me, wreck me.
He put his glasses on.
Have a question for staff, anyone?
I, I...
Member Nelson, you're on.
Thank you. Peggy, I do. So it, the norm, we don't want to necessarily do the normal process.
This statute would allow you to come up with a different process.
But I, I have concerns about putting low-income housing in a commercial area. So if I had to, to vote, I would say either wait or turn around and maybe come up with some policies on when we might look at allowing affordable housing in other areas.
Okay, thank you. That would be my suggestion.
Uh, Member Jordan?
I just pressed my button. You got it. Thank you.
Magic.
You are something else. Thank you, sir. Um, of course, on a personal note, I certainly don't want to see affordable housing in front of my business in industrial areas. That just would make no sense to me at all. And, you know, unfortunately, when you start talking about, uh, affordable housing, it tends to be put in places that's not desirable for, uh, others to live, which is not, in my mind, is a good thing. So I'm inclined, I think staff has a nut to do. And I'm inclined to say, let's see what other people do first and then, uh, maybe copy off them at a later date. I, I don't see where there's a rush for us to do something like that, uh, right now, in my, my opinion. If, if we don't have a requirement that we have to put something in place, I certainly would just rather wait and see what other cities do and maybe come back at a later date. When you maybe find out more information or you see something out there that may be commensurate with where we're going. That's my thoughts anyhow.
Anybody else? I see none. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there cards on this item?
We have no cards.
No cards. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? No, we're still on, on this last item.
You're still on twelve A. And I, I believe we have enough guidance.
Is that enough guidance? Okay.
Which I, I think, wait.
Just wait.
Yep. As long as the rest of...
Well, there's three, three items, and that's, that's a combination of all three of them, but that's okay.
Yes, sir. Because I think they're, this is gonna happen in bigger cities quicker. And we'll have a better feel for how they, they do that.
Okay, the next one?
Yes, sir. We're on item twelve B, which is a small-scale plat for Wendy Lee. The approval of a small-scale plat creates lots which do not require the creation of new streets or rights away. The process provides for the division of a limited number of lots in areas where the city currently serves, serviced by adequate public facilities and services. The Wendy Lee Small-Scale Plat is a proposed residential division of land consisting of four lots along Wendy Lee Drive. Currently, the property is vacant pursuant to the Development Review Procedures Manual. The required exhibits have been provided, and the small-scale plat has been reviewed by staff. The Small-Scale Plat has received the signature of the city surveyor, which is required prior to requesting this, the approval by city council. And Ms. Bisaka will show you the Milar if you wish, that has the approved signatures on that. It was omitted from your packet, and staff's recommending that you approve Wendy Lee Small-Scale Plat.
Okay. You have questions from, uh, Mr. Bisaka, anyone?
Can you tell?
All right.
I'm okay. Uh, can you tell me where this is?
Sure.
I mean, basically, in Titusville.
It's off Sisson Road. Wendy Lee Drive is between State Road four oh five and State Road fifty. It's near Little League Lane, north of the Enchanted Forest. Off of Sisson, and it's, it's just west.
Imperial State Elementary.
Oh, back there. Okay.
It's a very short little street.
Okay. I know where you are. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have cards?
No cards.
No cards. Uh, close the public hearing. Any further discussion? I'll accept the motion. I make the motion to approve the Wendy Lee Small-Scale Plat. Do I need to read more of that, or is that good?
Second.
You second?
Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously.
Uh, next item, sir. You're on petitions and requests.
Anybody from petitions and requests? I was wondering why you were waiting in that. Hey, we do this every two weeks.
Thank you. Appreciate you sitting here.
Okay. So...
Next item is mayor and council.
You have my report included in the agenda, city council. Anything to report? I see, let me see one first here. Vice Mayor Diesel.
Just quick. Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, first of all, I've commented several times over the last four years. One of the things I'm, I'm pleased with our council is that we have done some, or we have helped with. We have hopefully made a smooth road for redevelopment. And there are certainly some areas, the Grove Church and the old Goodings, um, the indoor storage over at the old Kmart. And I was fortunate enough this weekend to take my grandkids to the, um, I'm gonna get this right for them, I'm gonna mess this up, but the new skating rink. Oh, my gosh, I even wrote it down, uh, let's roll, Space Coast Skating Rink in the old Publix over in, um, on Garden Street. And gave me the tour, and it's, boy, they've got some party rooms in there. And they've got a, uh, sports decorated place and Frozen, the Disney, uh, movie. So basically, it was a wonderful time. No, I did not skate. As you know, I was gonna ask that. I, I told city manager in our meeting that I, I planned on doing it for the weekend. And, uh, he said, you know, they don't have wheels big enough for that truck. So that's a positive, baby. Don't get in front of that truck. Now, back in my day...
You'll be looking for a long time. Be careful.
Back in my day, um, I used to be that truck at Carousel Roller Rink. Can I remember when they sat down there and, and you may, of course, you remember it. The whole group of the owners was down there and so enthusiastic. And I spoke, uh, you know, quite often about how, uh, back in the seventies, the Carousel Roller Rink on Highway fifty was the big deal. And this looks so much like that when you walk in. And, um, it was just a wonderful time, and I, I really, every time I do that, I think about some of the other places. And I remember, uh, Bob Kirk saying at one point, and kind of hit me. He says, you know, we're not gonna do as much development in the next decade as redevelopment. I thought, wow, I hadn't thought of that. And sure enough, if you look around, I mean, you know, there, there's a lot of them. But that could be an empty space. And one of the things when I came in here in two thousand and sixteen that a lot of people were talking about, and we're still talking about it, I get it, and I was talking about it, was a lot of the empty buildings or the empty spaces. Well, you know, we can't make people come in, but they're coming in. And I'm pretty excited about it. Like I said, you know, the old Goodings and the old Kmart and the old Publix, that's three. And they're all very productive. So I just thought it was a wonderful time, and I appreciate it. And, uh, next time we go skating, city manager, I want you to come with us, and we're gonna go. A little roller derby. All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you. I, I have to just comment on, on that. My granddaughters went there. My granddaughters went there. I always do that at this time of night. And, and they loved it. And I know they had to put a lot of effort into making what they have. I haven't seen it. But, um, I did see the pictures. But, uh, you know, there wasn't much in that part of the building. So they, they've done a fine job with it and given our, our kids someplace to have recreation. And some of us that, not me, may roll, may roller skate, will love it also.
Watch.
I, I get it. Okay. Anybody, Member Nelson?
Yeah, um, some of the neighbors have been talking to me about Blanton Park. And Blanton Park, I understand that the playground equipment there is rusting and needs some upkeep. So I had talked to Jeff Davis about it, and they actually used CDBG funds to redo the Gibson Gym. And so I suggested to him that, that maybe we needed to use some of those funds to refer reach Blanton Park. Uh, we do have money for beautification, I believe. And that seems like that might be an appropriate use for it.
I got a comment. One is they did do some work on it already. Looks, it looks better than it, than it has. Second, I read in the paper today where the county commission is going to give a, an, uh, pretty good amount of money, I don't remember what it was, but it's, it's up there, to redoing Blanton Park because that is owned by the county.
Okay.
So they're getting money from the state, I believe. And they're gonna take that money and put it into that park. So maybe we're to wait and see what they do, or call women and see what they do. Maybe the city manager can do that.
Yeah.
I don't think, we're probably, they probably don't need our money on this one.
Well, that, that'd be even better.
I know. I couldn't wait to tell you. Yeah.
This was last...
Check on it, make sure that it wasn't misrepresented. But it was, uh, I think, you know, it was like, pay the company, it's done, and the money's coming in.
I think the last time I talked to Jeff Davis, I, I don't think he was aware of that. This was Thursday or Friday.
No, it just came out. I mean, it's, it's new news, right, right off the presses today.
That is great. And the other thing I wanted to say is there's a really good play, um, at our Titusville Playhouse. It is Dreamgirls this weekend.
Went, went to see it.
Did you see it?
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Oh, everything they do over there is actually, yeah, it's amazing. It's just six girls doing a lot of, um, music from the past, let's say.
That sounds fun.
And it's great. Six ladies, I didn't say girl.
That sounds like fun.
Oh, it is, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, who else? Anybody else? Member Nelson, you've already said yours. Counsel reports, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. Um, staff's looking forward to our first public hearing for our FY twenty-one budget, which will be tomorrow, um, September ninth at five-thirty.
He said what?
He missed the memo.
Um, we, we do have, uh, your read-ahead packet's been presented to you. So if you have any questions, please let us know. And, um, it, for all the six months of craziness that we've been experiencing, I believe this is a very solid budget, and staff worked real hard to pull this together with the uncertainty of stuff happening. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report.
Any other questions? City attorney, anything you would like to speak about? He looks like he might actually gonna be talked this time. Well, have a good evening. With that, unless there is somebody that has something else for the order, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.